Well, welcome. Tonight, as we have in previous shows, we're gonna meet somebody. Not the kind of person who just sits there and says, "This should be different. This should be taken care of," but somebody who says, "Put me in, Coach. I'll make a difference." Over the years, on the school committee, she's proven herself to be very strong and a strong force for Milford and our kids. So why don't we start with the introduction?
Absolutely. Thanks, Al. Thanks for having the show and thanks for having us. I think it's particularly in this day and age so important to have a forum where you can come and speak and connect with people. You know, we miss the town crier and all these modes of communication. So certainly, thanks for having me. My name is Megan Hornberger. I'm currently serving the end of my second term on the Milford School Committee. The proud mom to three boys. I have a second grader, a fifth grader, and a junior in high school. Recently became the proud parent to a golden retriever. So that's brought a whole new element of fun and chaos into our lives, which has been great. I'm a certified public accountant in Massachusetts. I work for a Boston-based renewable energy company. And I'm also a town meeting member, and I would really put a plug into anyone who is considering sort of public service. Town meeting is an amazing way to be involved. And that group makes really incredible decisions for the town. All of the work that the finance committee and the school committee does around budget. Town meeting is making those decisions at the end of the day. And so it's a great opportunity to get involved, and I would definitely encourage people to think about that as an opportunity.
Well, I'm still amazed that you and the other Hornberger pull it off, because Brand is critical to the finance committee and what goes on. And that takes up a bit of time. I mean, more than once, the mighty Max has come in to-
Support us, meetings.
Brand's coming home from lacrosse or something and had five minutes before the meeting, so he showed up with Sun.
Absolutely. It's gotten easier, Al, as they've, you know, grown up a little bit, where someone maybe can stay home alone. You know, but when they were younger, we used to joke how much, you know, we were paying for sitters to volunteer. But it's certainly been something that we both have really valued, and so it's definitely something that we're proud to commit to.
Now, you've got deep ties to Milford.
I do. I do. Yes.
Because the Hornberger name isn't a deep Milford name.
That's something else we joke about. You know, I think when you serve on, you know, for example, the finance committee, you know, you're appointed to that position, but for something like the school committee where you need to run, and particularly the first time that I ran six years ago, it was a very contested race. There were seven of us running for three seats, you know. So we did all the signs and the bake sales and the advertisements. But it was funny to drive around town, you know, from my husband's perspective, who's from Pennsylvania, really no family other than us here. And to see his name kind of plastered all over the place, or his last name plastered all over the place. But no, my parents have, you know, their families are from here, so my dad's a Holland. His brother was an attorney in town. My cousin also served on the school committee. His wife teaches, my cousin teaches, you know, many, many, many ties there. My mom's a Fitzpatrick. She was one of seven, so there were plenty of them running around. So it is great to meet people who have those connections. And certainly, raising children, it has been remarkable to kind of bring that sense of community and family back home. And, you know, it's been wonderful for our children to have that, so it's very special.
It must be very helpful to have a big family that you can pull from.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, not that you take it for granted, but sometimes you forget that not everyone has that. And I particularly remember when my grandparents were ill, you know, my mom, on my mom's side, everyone would just take a day. Because when they're seven, you just pick a day. And if it's, you know, only you or only you and a sibling, you know, that situation, particularly, I think about, you know, in caring for elderly parents, that situation is very different. I've been beyond blessed with how much my parents have helped us with our children. And to know that they have that relationship is just incredible, so I feel very, very fortunate.
Well, the other thing too is, I see it in my daughters. I mean, my mom came to Milford in forty-one. Her dad came to Milford in thirty-nine, so she was Milford.
Absolutely.
You know, the pride they took in having their grandma involved in everything. And as my mother got older, we learned what it was like to have babysitters. Because mom was always home.
Sure.
We never needed a babysitter.
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, it was just so different to all of a sudden need a grandma sitter.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I used to walk to my grandmother's house from Memorial when I went to elementary school there, because my mom was a teacher and wasn't home yet. And so my walk home was to West Walnut Street, which was, you know, right across the way from Memorial, so absolutely.
Well, that makes you a true Milfortian by definition. Third-generation Milford, and you live within two miles of your mother.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'll be honest, you know, that wasn't really something I necessarily thought was in the cards. You know, I moved away for a while and wasn't sure where life would take me, but it's brought me back here. And to be around family, there's really nothing like it, so I wouldn't-
Well, I was the opposite. I wanted to do what every Milford kid does: Run away.
Yep.
And I ran, first steps weren't too far to Worcester. Then Washington was cool.
Yep.
Paris was fun.
Very cool.
But the minute we had a daughter, that gravitational pull brought us right back to Milford.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's special. I think, you know, I think when there's if you think about a word that defines this town, for me, it is truly community. And that's, you know, really extended family, and I think our family and friends encompass that. And I feel incredibly blessed to have that, for sure.
So, Meg, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Excellent. So I've shared a little bit of kind of, you know, who I am in terms of a parent and having served on the school committee. And I've reflected, I think, Al, a lot, particularly in thinking about seeking a third term, the why. I think for me, it comes down to, I believe that I'm hardworking, I believe that I'm accountable, and I believe that I'm transparent. And I think we have a lot going on in the district right now, and I think those are important skills.
Well, we had a meeting recently that stands out in my mind.
We have many meetings, Al, but I think I know the one you're talking about.
Back in two thousand and three, before you were there, our budgets got slashed. And the union, the teachers' union, came to the FinCom and said, "Unlike towns around us that are delaying their raises, we'll give up our raise if you keep that money in the school system." Now, we couldn't guarantee anything.
Sure.
FinCom, I've always said, is the most influential powerless people, because we get one vote out of two hundred. But I was amazed that the union came to us and said, "We'll give up." Something they fought hard for, a raise to help the town. Well, two weeks ago, we got the surprise of our life with the not the eighteen percent you're expecting increase, but four percent total. So when we went to the school committee meeting, I expected it to be challenging.
Fair.
And I was amazed when Kevin and the school committee started off by saying, "We understand we don't have enough money in this town this year." And why don't you explain what happened?
Sure. So part of our kind of budgeting process is projecting the aid that we believe we'll get from the state, which is called Chapter Seventy-eight. As a general matter, we tend to be a little bit conservative in what we think that number will be. And we don't really know that final number yet, but the state does issue projections. And when they issued that projection, it was significantly less than what we had forecasted and what we were anticipating. So that was a big surprise to us, for sure. You know, we spend a lot of time figuring out what initiatives we want to move forward, what investments in the district we want to make. And when the state comes back and says, "You're not gonna get that funding," you know, we need to reconsider. That meeting did go so smoothly, Al, but in my opinion, that is really the result of the past decade of work, because I think that the teams have worked so collaboratively together. You know, we do our Saturday budget session every year. It's, you know, five or six-hour meeting. The finance committee members sitting on the school subcommittee are there. They're sitting there, they're present, they're, you know, listening, taking all that in. That's a huge commitment, and so I think it's the collaboration and the teamwork that we've spent years building that resulted in us being able to say, like, "We understand. We're gonna figure this out together, and we'll navigate it." So it's, it's hard. It's hard to hear that. It's hard to know that things that you believe are really important maybe aren't gonna happen this year. But there's also tough decisions. There's a pie, and we have to figure out how to divide it.
But it was amazing that when you made your pitch and we made our pitch, we were one percent different. So the whole discussion was around, what can we do to narrow one percent?
Absolutely.
So much better than the other towns where they're starting.
For sure. I think also I give the administration and our district a lot of credit. You have to be really creative, right? We have limited funding always. And figuring out how to use that and how to do things differently is something that they excel at, and they work at constantly. So definitely giving a lot of credit there. As you look to, you know, other towns, and certainly you look at, you know, teacher strikes and things that you hope are never happening here, I think, again, it comes back to the community. We have so many educators and administrators in our district who live in our town, who care about this town, who want to see this town succeed. And so fortunately, in my experience so far, it has been really collaborative, and we've been able to be effective.
So if I was to ask you, what do you think the three biggest challenges you'll face are? What would you say?
Sure. So facilities has to come out, right? Fortunately, the good news is the MSBA now agrees. So the Massachusetts State Building Authority has, you know, approved basically our high school to be submitted into the process to either be renovated or rebuilt. So that's, that's obviously a top priority. That's sort of our largest facility, hosts the largest number of students. We're, you know, potentially considering bringing the eighth grade into that building as well, which is really exciting. So that would be number one, when you think about the dollars that will be invested in that effort from starting with the feasibility study, but then on the project itself, that is a very significant investment. So that has to be number one. I think, secondly, it's recovering from the pandemic. You know, I think there were a lot of students who weren't in school for a long time, still being educated at home, but that's not the same. And so kind of making up those gaps and making up those strides in those years. There's a mental health component to the pandemic, so certainly, you know, SEL continues to be front and center. And when we think about the composition of our district, Al, we have students who have challenges, you know, in terms of food and economic challenges and otherwise, and sort of treating all of those in addition to educating the student and ensuring that we're able to, to take care of all that.
Now, we talk about a feasibility study. And years ago, we put money, and again, that's part of the cooperation. We put one point seven million dollars into a short-term stabilization account in case. I'd love to say with strategic brilliance, but it was luck. You know, when we put it away, we said, "There could be the day that we need the money, that we don't have it." And here we are.
We appreciate that that was done, for sure, because once you get admitted, right, you have a limited time to sort of follow through with the process. And so if we didn't have that funding, we would basically go back in the line. We don't want to do that. We don't want to miss our chance. And so certainly, we are incredibly thankful that we'll be able to move forward with that at this point in time.
Well, I mean, you think about it, there's five major schools in Milford. A school lasts forty to fifty years before something has to be done. So if you lose a cycle-
Absolutely.
I mean, by the time Milford High, whatever configuration is complete-
Sure.
Everybody's gonna be talking about Stacy.
Absolutely.
At least I assume it's Stacy's next.
And that presumes that numbers stay relatively constant, right? We maybe did see, you know, the influx that we had, where we had to add some additional space at Brookside. So, you know, that's assuming nothing else changes, and the world is certainly changing.
Well, you think about it, when we pitched Woodland, Meg, it was gonna be there for a generation. We're gonna have so much extra room. We're adding one child per year.
Absolutely. We had been constant, for sure.
You know, and it was, it was literally two hundred and twenty in nineteen seventy-four when we graduated, because I was one of them, and it was two sixty-five forty-five years later.
Absolutely. The other problem with the building process is you can't build for a projection. You have to build, you know, in the realm of what you have. And so even if we're putting up a lot of housing, you assume there's gonna be some students that come with that housing. You're not necessarily allowed to forecast as part of your building process.
Yeah, but we're one of the few towns that the school population is increasing.
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely.
If you sit there and say, "Most of the towns don't want to build to their future,"
Fair.
Because they'd have to cut back.
Fair. Good point.
But, you know, you look and you say, renovate or build new?
Personally, Al, my opinion is, it doesn't matter. The renovations are so well-done, they're essentially a rebuild. You need the feasibility study to tell you what's possible and how much what's possible costs, and then we'll figure it out. So I don't, I don't go into it with a preconceived notion. Oh-
Three hundred million-
Just add zeros.
Three hundred million for the tech school in Franklin. Four hundred forty million for the Haverhill effort?
They're hard numbers to swallow, for sure.
You know, you sit there and say, "How could we?" I mean, if we had to, we'd figure a way, but three hundred million would add fifteen million dollars a year in interest? Nope.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we have to look at what's possible and then kind of assess costs associated with that, and then figure out the best path forward.
If you had an option to design parts of the school,
Sure.
What would you add?
So I think we want as much hands-on as possible, right? We want to expand kind of what we're doing right now with the trades. There's so much potential from a career standpoint, Al, with the trades. So as much as we can provide that instruction and capabilities to our students, we'd love to do that. We really want, you know, top-notch academic facilities. So, you know, our science labs and just facilities to sit and educate and collaborate together. And so we have a lot of, I would say, wasted space, empty space that we have in the high school right now. And so much of that will be redesigned so that it's more effective and collaborative. You know, the space at Woodland's amazing, so I look forward to see-
But it's full.
It is absolutely full.
I mean, Woodland, when we looked at the old Woodland versus the new, it was, this will be empty. There'll be crickets. And all of a sudden, you turn around and say, "Adding two hundred kids a year." The crickets got displaced.
Absolutely. And that's where you have to get creative with your space and figure out-
Now, when you talk about adding programs to the high school,
Sure.
One of my pet peeves has always been, I love what's happening at BBT. It's a magnet school, top-line students get selected, you know, what, top fifteen percent of the academic class.
I don't know their admissions, but I-
Well, but it's been-
Yeah, for sure.
And you look and you say, "People like my dad" had four years of school in Portugal, came here. If you put him in an organic chemistry class, not gonna do well. But if you gave that man a tool, he was an artist. But you sit there and say, "How do kids who aren't top of the academic pyramid
Absolutely.
get in to get skills?"
Absolutely. And how can we equip them, Al, to leave high school with a certificate? Or leave high school with an internship, or leave high school with the skills that they need to go and work day one, right? And we don't want them to necessarily go and have to take a retail job, right? We want a trade where you have a craft and you have an art, and you can really economically succeed, if that's what your interest is. And so figuring out kind of what the programs will be to support that is something that Mr. Ottland and his team are definitely working on.
Well, that was the whole idea of redoing the equipment in Seawing.
Absolutely.
I remember we walked in, and it was like, "Cool. This looks just like it did when I was here." The equipment hadn't kept up.
Sure.
And today, biotech is such a driving force for, I mean, the jobs. Fifty, sixty grand coming out of school.
In Massachusetts especially, right? We're very fortunate to have that type of economy here. And so if we're able to give those students that knowledge, absolutely.
So, you know, adding those kind of programs in really feels right.
Hundred percent.
I'll put a kink in the armor. How about a fieldhouse?
So that would be amazing, right? And so I think part of our sort of economic package will be, what are the components that are included in the MSBA reimbursement process, right? And so we will want to take advantage of that as much as possible. And then maybe what additionally could we do? And so maybe there's potential grants and other opportunities to fund things like that. That would be amazing, Al, and I think that also has a significant potential of serving some of our, let's say, more SEL, economically disadvantaged, other types of issues that we have in our district. Maybe we could have a doctor come to a fieldhouse on a regular basis and do immunizations. Or, you know, I think there's so much opportunity in something like that. Never mind the athletics that could then run potentially twelve months a year out of our own facility. So would love to see that happen. I don't want to promise anything, but I think that to explore that, we would be remiss to not.
It sounds like blasphemy when somebody from the FinCom is saying-
We love it.
"We're probably not gonna get any reimbursement on a fieldhouse." But to me, it's a generational opportunity.
Absolutely.
I remember back in nineteen seventy, when the talk about the new high school and putting a pool and how we don't need a pool. But again, just like the fieldhouse, if you don't take advantage of it now-
Absolutely.
By the time you think about doing it, everybody's gonna have forgotten the high school and gone to Stacy.
A hundred percent. And go back, Al, to my community comment. I think that's a great opportunity for collaboration with the town, collaboration with the senior center. Think about the type of programming that we could offer the community if we had a facility like that. So absolutely.
Well, when I was at the school a while back, I saw these kids running up and down the halls.
Oh, yeah.
And I was like, "Excuse me, why are these children?" You know, "Why are these girls running up and down the hall?" Well, that's the cross-country team.
They have to run.
That's what they told me. I said, "Well, why are they running in the hallway?" Well, one, it's too cold outside, and two, we got nowhere to run.
Absolutely.
So a fieldhouse, I mean, I can think of things like when my youngest daughter graduated, and we got three passes for graduation, because it was inside.
Absolutely. Limited space. Absolutely. So I think there's a lot of potential.
Second challenge.
So the pandemic, right? A lot of people were out of school, not socializing. You know, didn't maybe have some of the same emotional development that they would have had the opportunity to have if they were on the playground with peers and, you know, having those type of interactions. So I think that's something that we're, you know, coming around on now, but I think it still takes a while to recover from. And I think maybe, let's say, you had a third or fourth grader, Al, right, at the start of the pandemic, they're now in middle school. They missed some key sort of emotional milestones, you know, navigating within the school. And so I think we're still dealing with some of that, maybe behavioral challenges. The kids are just overcoming from, from that experience. And certainly, you know, some gaps in education that, you know, it's hard to teach a first grader how to read online. Tension spans are not what we would maybe always hope. So I think we're, we're dealing with that. I think teachers are dealing with that. Maybe what a third-grade teacher was used to teaching, you know, now they're going back and also covering some second grade or some first grade material to ensure that we have that. But the district has made a lot of investments in, specifically in data. So we use iReady in grades K through eight now to really allow students to take a test, assess how they're doing, and figure out specifically where their gaps are, so we can offer that more personalized individual instruction. So if there's a component that you missed, we're able to give you that, you know, fill-in, if you will, so that you don't have to get pulled out of the classroom for that. You're able to get that, that gap made up, so that we're hopefully, you know, we're remitting that. So that, that's definitely one. And I think, you know, we just have, we have a challenging population, and I don't say that in a negative way at all. But I think, you know, undergrad in psychology, you know, certainly learned about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You have to have your fundamental needs get met before you can show up in the classroom and be ready to learn. So if you came to school and you didn't have breakfast, or you didn't have the warm jacket that you needed, right, these students maybe aren't ready to learn. And so how do we kind of figure out where do we align with the community and where do we provide those resources? So that all of our students are ready.
So your degree's in psych?
My undergrad is in psych. And then I graduated, and I said, "What is it that I'm gonna do now? I should go get an MBA." And I went back to the school, and I got my master's in business administration and accounting. And I actually went to Northeastern, and so they have a really big co-op program. So I did a co-op at Price Waterhouse Coopers, and they basically offer you a job after you graduate. And I said, "Sure, that sounds interesting."
I tried psych once.
I loved it.
No. No. I'd go to the side of the campus with psych and soc, get scared back, and said, "That's it. I'm going back to the easy courses: Chemistry, math, physics."
Different size of the brain, and that's all up.
Yeah, but in chemistry, A plus B equals C.
Right.
I didn't have to worry if A came from a bad container or B was in a bad neighborhood.
Yes.
It was very simple. There was one answer.
I do say, even in my business profession, I use my psych degree a lot more than my business degree, so it comes in handy, I can assure you.
Now, one of the questions that comes up a lot is brand-new people considering coming to Milford.
Sure.
School is one of the biggest questions
Absolutely.
that any parent has. Is there a good school system?
Absolutely.
If somebody asked you, "Will my child get a good education at Milford?", what would you say?
A hundred and ten percent. Now, you need to put in to get, get a good education, right? You have to show up, and you have to participate, and you have to engage, but I would say absolutely. So I can say firsthand that my children have. So I have three children in three different schools. You know, at this point, I've navigated all the schools from Shining Star to the high school. So I've seen it in action. I've seen how compassionate and how dedicated our teachers are. So absolutely, we have very close friends, you know, whose children are currently at Cornell and Duke. So I would say those are products of the Milford school system who have done incredibly well, right? So it's, it's absolutely possible. It's absolutely like most things in life. As much as you give in, you will get back. So absolutely.
But now, people worry that the demographics will work against you.
Sure.
They look at the MCAS scores and say, "Milford has lower MCAS scores than surrounding towns." Does that mean it's not as good as the school system?
So if you take that in totality, the scores in general are lower. If you look overall, if you look at a population like Hopedale or Hawkington as an example. I think if you were to take, you know, peer for peer, if you kind of look at, you know, not low-income or not English learner, and you were to go peer for peer, I think they're much more comparable. But yeah, we're, we're educating a lot of students who came to this district and didn't know the English language. And so not using that as an excuse, but that makes a test like the MCAS fairly difficult.
Well, every time we have the MCAS discussion, I remember when my daughter hit Middle School East. And Tommy Davron was the principal.
Sure.
That was his world.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've never seen somebody take so personal the fate of the students.
Absolutely.
So I walked in and decided, "Okay, hornet's nest. Let me poke it." And I looked at Tommy and said, "Why do your MCAS scores suck?" Pardon my French. And he looked at me and said, "Because you're ignorant." I said, "Great. Educate me." And he said, "I will take our top students and put them against any town that you mentioned or the other ones around us, because we have a bimodal distribution. Our top kids do as well or better than any of the towns surrounding us." But again, if we took either you or the other Hornberger and said, "In two years, you're gonna take a test in Mandarin. Can we really expect that you're gonna do as well as a native speaker?"
But at the end of the day, Al, right, we want everyone to improve, right? So it's not an excuse. We want to see those scores, you know, increase. And I think we've made a lot of investments in the district, specifically in math and ELA, to see that happen. And we're starting to see some of the fruits of those labors now, which is exciting. But absolutely, I would say that that is not the only indicator of a child's success or a child's potential. And I think fundamentally, our children do well.
No, but realistically, not to take you off the hook, but you're biased.
A hundred percent.
You're a parent-
Hundred percent.
-who's involved-
Yes.
-and on the school committee.
Totally fair.
So to me, you're not an unbiased judge.
That would be fair.
But the colleges are. So are our kids getting into top colleges?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
And how are they doing once they get there?
I would say they're doing fairly well. And that is something, again, we also want to see, you know, really continue and really figure out what investments we can make so that long-term success is what we're measuring, right? Because getting into school is great. Did you stay there? Did you graduate in four years, right? And so we really want to ensure that that's, that's what we're seeing. We're working really hard to give students college credit in high school to make it that much easier for families, maybe, where the economic impact would be fairly significant. They've already gotten credits before they've even started school. So absolutely, those are-
And I can speak, I mean, my daughter got into all the six, six or eight, whatever she applied to. Made me feel good. One, because she's my daughter.
Of course.
But two, it made me feel good that we're investing seventy million dollars a year.
Hundred percent.
And colleges around us, and they weren't the Oki-Fanoki Community College.
Oh, a hundred percent. Absolutely.
Now, getting in with step one, and then the question is, "Well, how did she do?" Except for one semester, she did good. She got a three-nine-five. She got a B-plus her junior year.
She was probably disappointed.
I had fun teasing her about that. Then I learned how smart she really is, because she went and had my transcripts pulled and said, "Dad, I don't see four-point-os across the board here."
That's amazing.
Okay. Point well-taken. We have a large percentage of non-English language speakers.
Correct.
People worry that the teachers are gonna have to teach down, and that's gonna limit the kids in their class. What do you say to that?
It's one of the most exciting things that I've heard over the last few months, which I'm just thrilled by and honestly, selfishly disappointed my children won't be able to take advantages. We are gonna start, Al, in the fall of twenty twenty-five in offering bilingual kindergarten again, where students will learn both languages. And we'll have a couple of classes in twenty twenty-five, and then we're looking to expand the program. I think being able to create a multilingual environment for everyone is key, right? And so, you know, I'm thinking about my second grader, who is dying to learn Spanish. He's been taking a Spanish tutor. These children want to interact and learn together. So I think the more opportunity we can provide for that, if we could graduate a hundred percent of our students as bilingual, like, check, right? Like, that, to me, is the ultimate measure of success. So I think that we're exposing our children to diversity early on in their lives is a great exposure to the real world, so welcome to America.
Well, you know, it's funny, because people, I don't know how many times I've been told how difficult it is for bilingual- For bi- bilingual or non-bilingual. English learners to assimilate. And I always said, thank God, nobody told me. Cause I never even thought about it till my darling bride came. We were engaged. And she came to meet my parents. And she looked at me and said, don't you ever speak to your parents in English? And I said, of cour- No. And then I remembered when I left the house for the first time, these kids were speaking funny language. You know, I got home, I said, mom, what are they speaking? You know, it was strange.
Sure.
But it didn't take long. You learned. You just blended in.
Absolutely.
But the question is, do we have enough resources to take care of our English learners and our traditional children?
Sure, uh, yes. And that's primarily, I think, Al, because we've been able to make investments in programs where so many of our teachers are becoming, you know, EL certified. Um, and being able to provide that to students. I think it's also a real area of opportunity for our community. Because we talk so much about the school system and our, you know, our EL students and our English learners. Think about how many of them are in our community as a whole and what can we do as a community as a whole to really work together. Uh, there's a lot of equity work going on in the district to help ensure that we're doing, you know, everything that we can for these students. So absolutely.
Well, you brought up some towns that are much more homogeneous in their.
For sure.
Distribution. Is that a benefit or not a benefit in your mind?
I think diversity is a positive. So I, I'm not gonna judge other communities. I think we're very fortunate to have the diversity that we have here. And I, I do think it's really reflective and representative of the country. Uh, so I think it's important for our children to, to be exposed to that, you know, from my perspective. Because currently my, my children will be in, you know, the majority. Uh, but to have that exposure at a young age, I think is very important. And that's all types of diversity, right? Neurodiversity, special needs, disabilities, physical disabilities. Um, you know, I think we're really fortunate that we have the, all of those students kind of working and learning together.
Well, that's America.
Hundred percent.
You know, personally, I've always felt it gives our kids a step up because when they leave. The town, they're not going into a homogeneous environment.
Absolutely.
But again, I, I know that parents worry, do we have the resources? Are we gonna teach down?
Sure.
And in your mind, no?
No, that curriculum is not changing. What we, we, we've set out to teach our children is what we're teaching them. Uh, and we've put in sort of the, the scaffolding and the, the necessary steps to help our English learners kind of get, get to where they need to be. And, and we do incredibly well, Al, right? If we're fortunate enough to have those students join us in pre-K or in kindergarten. By the time they get to Woodland, they're not even English learners. They're former English learners, right? They've learned the language. Um, and so, you know, if, if they join us early enough, it's like they've, they've had that opportunity and they're, you know, caught up, if you will, from a language standpoint. Um, and then they're learning the curriculum, the same as our other students, so.
Well, it's from the language, it's from a culture.
Sure. Absolutely.
I get a kick out of hearing about these new immigrants to Milford, look what they're doing. And I laughed because I said, yeah, those Guatemalans, they're the new Ecuadorians. Who were the new Brazilians? Who were the new Portuguese? Who were the new Irish? Who were the new Italians? Dang, they're gonna be just like us.
Hundred percent.
And that seems to be a good thing in many people's minds.
Absolutely.
Talk to me about special needs. What do you think about programs?
I think they're, I, so personally, I haven't had a student that, you know, has participated in those programs. So I can't speak from personal experience versus other, you know, curricular or extracurricular uh things that my own children have done. Uh, but certainly as a committee member, uh, that's been something that I've worked really hard to support. Uh, I think Dr. Braddock has brought a great perspective and a great role, you know, having a child with special needs, having ensuring bringing that perspective to the table. I think that's been incredibly valuable, which is why I think a committee of seven is so important because everyone brings something unique um and brings different skills to the table. So I think our programming is fantastic. You know, my, my children did go to Shining Star, which was great because it is an integrated preschool. And so they get visibility to that at a very early age. Um, and we've worked certainly very hard to provide the special needs programming, you know, K to twelve to support our students.
Now, we've had comments that our special needs investment is so high compared to other towns. That we draw people into Milford.
So what I would say is if you have a student with special needs who needs to leave the district, that is incredibly costly. And so anything that we can do to keep them in Milford should always be our first priority. And so that's certainly programming that we're always looking at putting in place. We, we wanna serve them here. We'd like to have them here.
So what happens when you have people coming in from other towns, school choicing in? With special needs.
Welcome. I hope your child is incredibly successful here and incredibly successful in their life. I'm glad you found this.
Thank you.
To be a home, absolutely.
Cause my opinion was always, if the worst thing that's held against me when I'm hopefully up north, took the bus ride north. If I get on the bus and they hand me suntan lotion and a towel, I'm gonna have other things to worry about. But if the worst thing that I'm ever faulted for is helping kids who weren't totally Milford. Now, I don't want programs that are geared towards other towns. But if we help some kids along the way of taking care of Milford kids, I think that's okay.
Hundred percent. We all live here together right now. Like we, we all benefit if these children are successful. Absolutely.
And you know, again, special needs. We think of the kids who need help to make it to the median. What are we doing for the top ten percent of our next Nobel laureates? Are we taking care of them?
Absolutely. Our, our goal there certainly is to offer the most regular, rigorous, excuse me, curriculum possible, you know, via our AP classes. Um, which students are taking in droves. Um, and we see them do very well on AP exams, which I think is an indicator. And then I think fundamentally, the majority of those students are going on to college. And so then you look to, you know, where do they get accepted to prove that? And then how did they find school to be? You know, was school reasonable? Was school way out of their league? And I think when they come back and say, I felt prepared, then you say, yes, we've met the mark here.
Yeah, again, as I say, the step one is getting them into these top schools.
Hundred percent.
Step two is making sure they graduate. And I'm always amazed. I mean, my daughter put it in perspective when she pulled me aside once and said, dad. My job is to push these kids to their potential. And maybe a little bit more.
Absolutely.
But if I do that, I'm just doing my job. And that was refreshing. Because what these teachers go through is amazing to me.
Completely. My information, you know, a lot is anecdotal at this point, Al, in terms of from friends of friends. But when their kids come back and say, I felt ready for that math class, or I felt ready for this class, that to me is sort of the proof. Um, you know, that the curriculum is working and that the instruction is there.
You know, when you hear these kids have graduated with honors or they're going on, I mean, to Ivy League schools, number one, and then going for graduate degrees.
Hundred percent.
We can't be doing something bad.
Hundred percent. And it's also incredibly rewarding where you have, you know, former students come back who are now teachers in the district. And are, you know, now giving back to that future generation, you know, as you know all too well. And that, that's just, that's remarkable.
It's really cool when you see like the Walshes, where mom and son.
Hundred percent.
If the family didn't have a good experience, you'd never bring your child back.
Hundred percent.
You know, both of them are so incredible for what they do. Another question.
Sure.
Milford school system safe?
So I said my three children, so hopefully that's kind of the only answer that you need. Um, absolutely. I mean, you, you can't say, is anything safe, Al? I don't know. You look at the news and you say, it's sometimes it's just too much, right? Do I wish the world was safer right now? Yes, absolutely, I do. Do I believe that our schools are safe and that we're doing everything we can to protect them? Yes. Certainly the town has made a very big investment in ensuring that that's possible. You know, we have our school resource officers, you know, we have this team within the police that's, you know, ready to respond. Um, so I would say yes. Am I making any promises? No, the world is crazy. And so it's, it's, you know, that's just the reality of where we live in twenty twenty-four.
Think you can, the best you can do is say it's as safe as we can make it.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. And I also think, you know, if you look at a lot of root causes of some of the things that have happened in other places. You know, it's mental health at the forefront of that. And I think that's an area we've made a really big investment. And so we wanna protect and connect with students, you know, so people are safe and feel safe and do safe things. Um, and that's something we take very, very seriously.
How do you answer people who say, do you feel comfortable with having armed officers wandering the halls?
Yeah, um, so I, I will share a little story that kind of puts it in perspective for me. So we have our school resource officers that work incredibly hard to be in our buildings and communicate and engage with the students. And this was a few years ago now, maybe four years ago. I happened to be at Memorial on Valentine's Day. And the school resource officer was there and walking down the hall and children were running out of rooms, Al, to give them Valentines. And I thought, what a great relationship for these little kids to have with these officers of the law. And I think that really kind of set a tone for me where if you can change that perception and connection and relationship from an early age. What's the impact of that in the long term? And if you have an officer there who, you know, is armed because that's their profession. Then that's potentially a benefit in the very off chance that something does happen, so.
We invested hundreds of thousands of dollars. To make sure that we had SWAT officers. At the ready. And I remember when it came to the proposal to the FinCom, I looked over at Chris Moore and I said, God help us if we say no.
I know, I know.
And something happens.
Hundred percent. It's a decision you shouldn't have to make. It's something we shouldn't have to be talking about.
Well, it's like life insurance. You never wanna consider you're gonna cash in on life insurance, but.
Hundred percent.
A lot of people need to have that security.
Brett and I were both widowed, Al, very young, so absolutely. Yeah, that's how the Hornberggers came to be. We both experienced very significant loss in our lives very early on. And so a hundred percent, you hope that's not the case, but if you ever need it, you're glad you have it, right? So.
And I love the idea that, you know, again, it's tangential. You don't feel it, you don't see it here, but.
Absolutely.
Everything you hear in the news is, there's communities where the kids don't trust the police.
For sure.
That they run away or they won't talk to them. When I go up to the high school and I see Anthony there. And he's not the smallest guy. You know, it's not like he can be a shrinking violet.
Totally.
But you can see the relationship he has with the kids.
A hundred percent. And that, that's a, I'm glad you mentioned him. It's a great example. So we actually were recently doing some equity work for the district as part of this equity audit. He was a participant sitting at that table, giving up evenings to be there and provide his feedback. I mean, to me, that just speaks volumes about how committed some of these individuals are to our district.
Well, it made me feel good. The last time I went to school, it was to do a mentor program at lunch. And there were two police officers. Parked in front of the school. And that to me made a really strong statement that there they are, they're having their lunch or what they're doing, but they're doing it right in front.
Absolutely.
So less than good people are gonna know.
Hundred percent. If anything, it's a deterrent, right? It's the same with, you know, speed traps and otherwise. And certainly as a parent, something that brings you a sense of comfort, you know, to know that is, they are, do have that presence there is incredibly important.
I just remember when they made their pitch and they said, Milford has a SWAT team, a regional SWAT team. That can be in Milford within thirty-five minutes of being called. And I, I didn't know. I, we asked a question, well, how long does the average issue take? Eighteen? So there's no women.
You could do the math.
Do the math. So they'll be here seventeen minutes after it's all over. And I like the idea that Anthony and the whole crowd are crawling around all the corridors and everything. Cause like in Texas, you heard that one of the biggest problems was the cops didn't know where they could hide.
Hundred percent.
I don't think there's a place at Milford High that Anthony doesn't know about.
Oh, a hundred percent, absolutely.
And I bring him up because I just know what he does. The whole team is the same way.
Completely. And they're doing trainings and they're absolutely so on top of it. And so again, I think that comes back to the community and the collaboration and sort of how well those organizations kind of work together.
Now, you mentioned community. What are we doing to get the parents of the immigrant children? Now, and I say immigrant, I mean recent immigrants. Cause we're all immigrants. I don't know of many Native Americans in our school system.
Fair, totally fair.
So whether you're Irish immigrant, Italian, Portuguese, whatever. But I remember my father, God bless his heart, had no idea what was going on. But when there was an event at the school. He was told, you have to go and support your son.
Absolutely.
So he put on his little hat, put on his coat.
Absolutely.
Went and sat for an hour or two in the auditorium with no clue.
Absolutely, but he was there.
But he was there. And I don't think he really understood what it meant for me to look out.
Absolutely.
And see him. What are we doing to get more parents? Attending.
Absolutely.
And knowing what's going on.
So that's a challenge. So one technology is incredibly helpful there. Uh, so now every, all parents have an app. Uh, so we all have talking points. And so any communication that goes out to parents is sent in their home language. And so all parents are able, you know, to read the message, uh, which is amazing. That didn't happen, you know, five years ago. So that's sort of, they get the communication regarding meetings and events, et cetera. We have translators, Al, at most events. So every PTO meeting has translators. So if someone comes as a Portuguese-speaking parent, they can hear the meeting in Portuguese. They have a translator who's providing that to them. The same with back-to-school nights. We provide translators, parent-teacher conferences um as well. And then we also have um an English, basically a, um, a multi-language parent advisory council. And so I'm ashamed to admit, I've not yet been to a meeting, but I'm going in March, uh, it's already on the calendar, to actually engage. And so the director of EL um will be there and that is a group that meets monthly, I believe. Um, and so that's an opportunity to really hear from them and get their feedback. Um, and have that learning go both ways. Um, and so we're working to engage them.
My understanding is, when we think of English as a second language. Portuguese and now Spanish.
Sure. Haitian Creole, absolutely, yeah, keep going.
Do, because I was told there's like thirteen or fifteen languages.
For sure. Yes, it's incredible.
How do you deal with all of these languages?
You try to find help where possible, right? And so we've been fortunate so far within the district to be able to hire people, even if it's only a couple of them. And again, uh, some of these are lots smaller populations, right? So Spanish and Portuguese, we have throughout the district. From a, you know, teacher, teacher support, administrator standpoint, you know, individuals that can speak those languages. Something like Haitian Creole would be a smaller population of staff that we would have on board to help them. But then we would leverage technology and tools to engage with those families.
But they're growing. I mean, now we have a whole hotel in Milford, fifty families.
Absolutely.
I mean, in a way, we're fortunate that we didn't have to absorb all hundred children, cause half of them go to other towns. From a cultural point of view, it's a loss, but from a finance point of view.
For sure. And Milford in those situations, Al, is a lot more fortunate than the other towns because we have the infrastructure in place for them. In some towns where they didn't have those populations, it, it's a lot more of a, a cultural um challenge, you know, to meet and support those students, so for sure.
Well, it's always amazing because i- if somebody really said, we've got twenty-plus languages spoken in the Milford school system. I would have been surprised.
Absolutely.
I was surprised when they said that. I mean, they talked about Arabic and Creole. It's like, how do you get volunteers?
Absolutely.
How do you?
In a lot of those cases, you may have parents who are also English speakers, so that also facilitates. But it's the same way that we grew, you know, just our Spanish and Portuguese. You know, you just start small and you continue to expand.
Well, the Portuguese community, I remember when I was a kid and the graduation, Milford Daily, when we had Milford Daily News.
Yeah.
Um, would list all the uh graduates. My mother would sit there with a red pen and circle every Portuguese name.
That's sweet.
You know, and one day she looked at me and says, we have a lot now. Cause you know, when we were kids, it was six or eight families.
Hundred percent.
And all of a sudden, it grew and grew and grew.
Absolutely.
School choice. Explain school choice and what the effect is on Milford.
Sure. So school choice is an option where you could go to another uh public school district, you know, within the Commonwealth. Uh, if that's district is accepting students, uh, you can potentially apply and get accepted. Milford also, you know, historically has allowed students to come in from other communities. Uh, our numbers are currently at such a place that we're not really welcoming many students in because we don't have the space for them. Um, but students could, you know, decide to, for example, apply to a Holliston or, you know, a neighboring district if they were interested, so.
But it's interesting because when you think of school choice, it used to be the Gazinatas and the Gazaudas were about even.
Sure.
The school committee made a conscious decision that's cost them a million dollars. Million three a year. Why?
There's not really an alternative, Al. I think what, class size is incredibly important to us, right? And so we're not gonna allow numbers to come in where all of a sudden.
There's an alternative. You met, you go for the dollars and you sacrifice the learning.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that. We're not, when I'm sitting there, we're not gonna do that. That's not a decision we're willing to.
But I think that's something that people have to understand is you can cut off the inflow.
Yes.
When we said, look, we don't have any open spaces in our classes. And you gotta be careful, obviously, because if you let a kid in in the first or second grade. He or she's there for ten years if they wanna be.
Absolutely.
But that was, gotta be a hard decision to sit there and say, we're gonna forego a million dollars worth of revenue.
I think class size is incredibly important as a general matter to us. And so I think it was, in my opinion, it felt like clearly the right decision. And so it, it wasn't, even though there's financial consequences, sure, for that. I think it was absolutely worthwhile.
What's our class sizes like?
So it ranges, I would say, between eighteen and twenty-four, kinda depending on, you know, where you're at, um. Obviously, our younger grades, we try to keep a lot smaller, we definitely had some pockets that were a little bit uncomfortable, maybe two or three years ago. And we really worked hard, fortunately, it was extra money, you know, and otherwise, where we were able to kind of right-size though, so I feel like right now, we're kind of in that sweet spot. Other, some classes are bigger, for sure, um, but I think they're, they're all pretty comfortably, uh, within a range right now.
Well, you always have the bubble.
Mm-hmm, hundred percent, and you can't build for that, right? And it's hard to have the infrastructure to support that, because that bubble then is gonna go to a new grade next year, and so, uh, yeah, but we we work to do what we can.
So this year, we've got a bubble in third grade. Which next year is gonna be lower, so. But if I'm a fourth grade teacher, what does that mean for me?
So we've had some flexibility, right? So particularly at the earlier levels, you can have someone who's a second grade teacher this year, who actually will be a third grade teacher, for example, or first grade versus second. Um, so you'll have some swapping going on to account for that and to adjust for that, um, in given years. Um, but that gets a lot harder as you get to specialization in high school, and that's where we may need to add a teacher. Uh, but that benefits all students too, right? If you add a teacher, all the class sizes get smaller, and so, um, a lot of, a lot of individuals benefit from that, if we're able to do it financially.
So the teacher can follow the bubble?
Exactly, correct.
Well, that feels right. A couple of years ago, we put millions of dollars into expanding Brookside. And I remember I was at the meeting when I said, please don't call them portables. Portables brought back memories of trailers and Memorial and.
It's an addition, for sure.
Is it the right decision?
Oh, a hundred percent, absolutely.
Why?
We needed the space, we needed the space. Students at that age, right, they need space for learning and moving and growing, um, and the numbers in those buildings were really, were really necessary to support that.
What can we do to improve the social aspects of the school system? Probably the hardest thing, but luckily you got a psych degree, so.
Again, there, I think so much is community, Al, and finding and, you know, making available programming that interests all students. And so, you know, I think that's an area that Milford really excels at, you know, be it the, you know, athletics or the arts or the music, you know, the theater. Um, all different kinds of clubs, I think you see so much, I've seen it particularly as my student has advanced on to Milford High School. And just the depth of what's available to engage students and finding ways to pull them in and figuring out what interests them. And creating a community around that, uh, cause you want all students to be involved in sort of all aspects of their, their educational life. And the more you can build upon that, the more sense of community that they'll feel, and the more they wanna come to school, we need them to come to school to learn, and so that's a huge component.
Sports academic balance, always an issue at schools. I mean, I was always very impressed with the AD Pete Boucher. When he came on the school, on the show, and the first thing out of his mouth was, I have student athletes.
Yes.
Said, wow, what a pleasant outlook from an athletic director.
Completely.
How do you feel our academic athletic balance is?
Sure, so I think we have very kind of stringent requirements around your academic performance that allows you to participate in athletics, and that's key, right? Because if you have a student who is not succeeding academically and is not on track to graduate, we're not serving them, right? Because being, you know, a star whatever player in high school, you know, is not gonna get you necessarily where you need to be for the rest of your life. So we wanna ensure that you have that academic foundation in order to participate. That said, the academic should be an amazing supplement to your education, right? And you're creating those social connections and you're getting out that energy, um, personally, I know I always did busier, better in high school, and that might be true in my life now. The busier I am, right, kinda the more you have going on, and so, in those seasons where you have sports, it's sort of fortunate you to get home and study, because you don't have six hours after school. You have two hours before bed, um, and so I think it's, it's a great opportunity for students, our athletic programming is incredible. Um, it's been incredible to me how much we've built out at the middle school level, that really never existed when I was younger, and so it's really neat to see all of those teams take shape. You know, you have cross-country and all these different things going on at Stacy that now carries these students into the high school, um, which I think has been amazing, so.
Does the town support school enough?
Well, we always want more, Al. We have to want more, that's our job, uh, I think, again, I think it's been really collaborative, right? I think, yes, of course, do, do we want the sky? Yes, we want to to do everything that we can, um, but a hundred percent, and again, I think we're incredibly supportive, not only to the finance committee, but to town meeting. And I think that is a body that probably gets, you know, not recognized enough in terms of the, the support that they've provided and the importance of that role.
Well, you know, it's always funny when people say, it just flows, there's never disagreement at town meeting. And I'm sitting there saying, okay, were you around in February, when we walk in and say, we're broke? Finance committee says, we're destitute, we have no money, and the school committee says, we need a billion dollar increase.
Hundred percent.
And then somewhere in the next month and a half. It all comes down to, okay, what is it we really can live with? And what is it that we really can afford?
Absolutely, and that, you know, that time and that investment on the finance committee's, you know, behalf, Al, where they come to all these meetings. I feel like they really, the group that's participating really understands our district and understands the needs of our district. And so when we're advocating for something, I feel like they, they truly understand that, and so it makes so many of the conversations so much easier. You don't feel like, what, you're not explaining, you know, what an interpreter would do or what, you know, a particular role would do, because they have the understanding, that's been really invaluable.
And so much of it, I mean, when you hear the word initiatives.
Yes.
People don't understand what's an init- it's an addition.
Something new.
Something additional, because they use the word that I hate called level services.
Yeah.
I like level funded.
Fair, that's fair.
You know, cause level services may not exist. And then we gotta cut from other places, but at the end of the day, after we get through the pontification.
Yes.
We sit there and say, okay, now what's real?
Mm-hmm, hundred percent.
Well, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Thanks, Al, I think fundamentally, because I'm hardworking, transparent and accountable, I've had an opportunity to serve our district for six years. Uh, and particularly with the, you know, the building project on the horizon, I would like the opportunity to serve for three more.
I'm still amazed how you and the other Hornburger. Can pull off three kids in the school system and still serve on all the committees and. The amount of time you put into Milford, but I'm glad you do, and I'm glad the other Hornburger does too.
Me too, me too, that's been a great, great opportunity for him, he's very strategic in his thinking, so it's been, it's been an honor to serve, and I know he feels the same, so it's been really.
Well, it's also, I felt self-served when I volunteered for things. Cause I was showing my daughters. This is what it's like to be part of a community.
Absolutely.
And you've got the advantage of having two deep Milford families.
A hundred percent, yes.
You know, for me, it was my grandfather and my mother. And that was it.
Absolutely.
She was here forever, but that was it. And now my daughter's here and my grandson, my granddaughter.
Absolutely.
It just feels good to be part of Milford.
A hundred percent.
For everything you do and your family does, and your extended family did and does, we thank you.
Thanks, Al, thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
And as always, I'll never ask you to vote for a specific candidate. But I'll beg you to get out, understand the candidates. There's forums at the senior center, there's forums, citizens from Milford, uh, there's shows like this, there's Milford Informer. Get to know the people, because, you know, we think of the select board as having the greatest influence. But as you get to have teenagers. And you, yeah, I know. And you fight for an hour or two a day to be with them, you realize that the school committee dictates, short-term, six hours a day of their life. Plus four hours a day of after school, and sets them up for the future. So please, get out and vote, but learn, be educated as to who you feel most comfortable with. And as always, to our six loyal viewers, or with the Hornburger extended family, we may be up to eight or nine. May God bless, may tomorrow be a better day than today, good night, Al.